Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Village Board Meeting for December 17th, 2013. I call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Please stand for the village allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered routine, will be acted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at the appropriate time -- point on the agenda. At this point, are there any items on the consent agenda the board wishes to remove?
Mr. President, I would like to add an item to the consent agenda, item C1, unless there's an objection.
Okay. At this point, is there any items we used to add and we're adding C1? Anyone else?
Oh, yes, please. I'd like to add F3 and 4.
Do you have any objections to those? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda, which will include the bills list, number one under planning and zoning, a zoning ordinance map amendment, number one under finance and golf committee, computer replacement program purchase, number three on the public works committee, underground fuel tank removal bids, and number four on the public works committee, flood control project engineering request for qualifications proposals and engineering services contract.
So moved.
Seconded by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Martin. The clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. We need to vote on amended consent.
Thank you both.
Read them all. Okay, good.
To approve those items.
All right, moving right along. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. I noticed was not on the consent agenda. I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Cammer to approve the minutes as recorded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Epstein.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is under treasures report. Jeff, do you have a report for us?
Yes, very briefly, Mayor. The sales tax report for the fiscal year 2013 with revenue through October 2013 to date, $1,097,662. It's about 0.66 percent above last year at this time when compared to last year's budget. Moving on to the motor fuel tax report, fiscal year-to-date revenue for November 2013, year-to-date revenue, $597,892. And when you add in our high growth in jobs now, we are currently at $815,366. And it's trending about 1.56 percent to date above budget from last year.
Next item we have on the agenda is under the president's report. I have nothing to share other than I wish you all a very Merry Christmas, joyous holiday season, and a prosperous new year. We'll move on to question and answers. President -- from the president and trustees, are there any questions at this point from the board?
Thank you for the good dinner at the golf course.
Yeah, well, that was well done. Next item on the agenda is the town hall. At this point, will we ask anybody in the audience that is interested in addressing the board with any concerns, please step up the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody out back to address the board at this time?
Good evening, board. My name is Jim McConkey. My address is 999 McClintock Drive, Burridge, Illinois. I'm here representing the Labor's District Council Labor Management Cooperation Committee, and I'm here to address the board on item F2 of the Public Works Committee. And I want to apologize to your director for dropping out. I dropped off some documents to him this morning. And because of the people that had to do the approval and everything, it took me longer than I wanted to get it over there. But I think that those documents are quite interesting about the one contractor, who was your low bidder on that project? And I would ask that if it's possible to table that item for tonight until the board could possibly see all those documents themselves.
Well, we'll have to consider that under question and answer, I would imagine, under discussion.
Let me just touch on that. This morning, I was at the village hall, and the public works director brought in a letter from the Labor's District Council Labor Management Cooperation Committee. And in sum and substance, it alleges that the low bidder was affiliated with a former company, Municipal Sewer Services LLC, and that the operator of that company was Anthony The new -- the low bidder is a company by the name of Pipe View LLC on the sewer TV contract that's on your agenda this evening. The managers of that company under the Secretary of State's website are Jane Duffy, who resides at an address in Bartlett, and Nicholas Zerrantello from Laporte, Indiana. There's no indication that the gentleman that they're referring to, Anthony Duffy, also known as Tony Duffy, is an owner of that company or, meaning a member of the LLC or a manager. Apparently, that Mr. Duffy was -- is the bar City of Chicago contracts because with this other company, unrelated, they had employed relatives of Mayor Daley, and it made the paper, and he was, in fact, convicted and sent to prison for a 17-month term. All that being said, the union has brought this up. Apparently, it may be that the low bid contractor is not a union contractor, but that's beside the point. That can't be a mandatory term in your bid specs. They are required to pay prevailing wages, which are typically close, if not the same as union's wages. So with that information, they would suggest that, as he stated, that it be tabled and then take a look at that, and would they be their proposal that that contractor be disqualified and you go with the next lowest bidder? I don't recall the discrepancy in price. Maybe someone else does. I don't have that handy. But I don't -- you know, the allegation and the tie-in between those two companies, the fact that this Mr. Duffy may be married to Jane Duffy, and that the principal place of the new company, which is Laporte, Indiana, has an office in Bartlett, my view, that's not a sufficient basis to determine that that's not a responsible bidder.
And I would imagine we'd be discussing this during the discussion portion of that particular agenda.
Well, we may be, but this is to address, since this gentleman up here, he won't have another opportunity to speak when we get to that item. But I thought, since he's here now, I thought I'd address it now.
Right. I mean, I'm not bringing this up as a union issue. I'm bringing this up as a prevailing wage issue.
Well, he's required, under our contract terms, to pay prevailing wages.
Pay prevailing wages, yes.
And we insist that they provide certified payroll, and that is the term of this contract that he will be held to.
Correct. I understand that.
And so if he doesn't, then he's not going to get paid. We withhold payment till we see certified payroll information. So that's a legitimate.
And there has been times where contractors have not paid prevailing wage, and that, you know, that it has been sent to the Department of Labor, and they've determined they haven't paid prevailing wage.
Right.
Even though the contractors willingly know that they have to do it.
And that'll be our responsibility to follow up.
Something that we'll have to look into, we as -- when someone asks for a payment on a job, they don't get paid till they submit that certified payroll, and we keep those records. So that's what we require by law, that we put in our contracts by law, and that'll be something we'll hold them to. And if he doesn't, you've alerted us to the fact, so we'll be watching it extra carefully because sometimes that is what non-union operators or contractors do. But we insist on prevailing wage, and they'll be held to that standard, assuming the board awards the contract to the low bidder.
Thank you for bringing it up, bringing it to our attention, and we'll make sure that staff follows up on your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time?
Yes, Diane Rocha, 315 West North Avenue in Bartlett. I was just wondering, we were in last month, there was doing a traffic study on our street. Did you guys get the results of that yet? We are the ones with the cut-through traffic going through Northwestern. They were doing a traffic study. The police department, we haven't heard anything on it.
We'll have staff address that, but I think it's on -- I'm pretty sure it's ongoing.
It's still ongoing.
The traffic study.
Correct. It is ongoing. We're collecting data. Been doing that for several weeks, and also, we've detailed an entire traffic unit to that neighborhood, and enforcing the laws that are on the books as well. But yes, we do continue to collect data as there as well.
Okay. I was just wondering what was going on with it. Thank you.
And I think we also, just in addition to that, I think we're trying to tie in the overall traffic study into that area as well.
Okay.
So we wanted to make sure that not only we get a good price for it, but we got some actual data that we could use. So that's something that's going to be coming up, I believe, probably the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which are standing committee reports. First standing committee report is planning and zoning. Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. My one item has been taken care of under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Cammer. Next item on the agenda is under the building committee. Chairman Martin.
I have no report tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Next item on the agenda is finance and golf committee. Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The sole item was already addressed through the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item on the agenda is license and ordinance committee. Chairman Carbonero.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonero. Next item on the agenda is police and health committee. Chairman Shipman.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Shipman. F, Public Works Committee Chairman Aaronz.
Well, I have something to talk about.
Go ahead.
The first agenda item is the public works pickup truck purchase. This is a memo from Paul Camper, our director of public works, and he has been talking to those people in Taylorville, Illinois, Bob Writings Incorporated of Taylorville, through which we do joint purchasing. They bid for the cost of one pickup truck delivered to Bartlett, $17,835. There is a budget for this item for $25,000. It will replace a 2005 Ford pickup, which will be sold at auction after the new truck arrives. And so I would move -- I move the village board award the purchase of one pickup truck from Bob Writings Incorporated of Taylorville, Illinois, for the total amount of $17,835.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Aaronz, seconded by trustee Martin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
I guess I would ask, how long are we going for to get the pickups? Are they five years, 10 years? What's the average?
Well, that was a 2005, so.
Right, 2005, so that's.
Eight years.
Quite a few miles on it. I'm just asking as an average, I mean, is this what we always do, a certain set time?
Typically, what we do on our pickup trucks are high-service area trucks that are out on the street on a daily basis. This is a high-mileage vehicle. This will have about $140,000 by the time we trade this in. We try and rotate this out on a five-year, right around $100,000, $120,000. We did evaluate this at the five-year, said the condition of that was in great shape. We did pass it on. Anywhere between five and seven, we actually evaluate those. But on average, we can get seven years out of a service truck, a high-mile truck on those.
And this price of the new truck, is that with the trade-in?
No, we do not trade in any of our vehicles. All of our vehicles will be sold off on, at an auction at a later time. We found out that we can get a lot better of a price being auctioned them off or selling them instead of trading them in underneath the Illinois Joint Purchase Program, again, transporting them back down to Springfield. And it's a deal, they're just trying to turn around. Selling them privately through a contract, or through an internet or an auction, we do get a better dollar amount.
Let's see, we got our money's worth out of that truck.
What do you usually get for them when they're sold?
Again, depending on the condition, with a truck of 140,000 miles, we're lucky to get 15, you know, maybe $1,000, 15, $1,800.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, our agenda item number two is the sanitary sewer cleaning and televising program bids. October 29th, notice bidder was placed in the Examiner and the Daily Herald. The bids came back with a low bidder of $70,843.80 by Pipe View LLC. Although they have not done business with us before, we did call around and receive positive reviews of their work. So at this time, based upon the bids submitted, I would move the village board approve resolution 2013 dash.
Ninety?
Ninety? We've done 90 resolutions this year? Wow. A resolution approving of an agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Pipe View LLC for the 2013 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising program.
Second. It's moved by trustee Aaronz, seconded by trustee Cammer. Is there any discussion?
I'm a little hazy on exactly what the issue was supposed to be with this company other than somebody related to the principles somehow was once convicted of a felony.
Just I can tell, it's a bounce of when he was with a different company.
Okay.
Bidding on City of Chicago job, and did not disclose what they were supposed to, and was convicted and is barred from bidding on City of Chicago jobs. This is a different entity, a new LLC. The manager of that company, there are two. One is, appears to be his wife, but a different person, and the other is, and the main office is in Laporte, Indiana, different individual. The gentleman may work and actually run the TVs, I suppose, but it's a different issue. It does not disqualify them from bidding here. And the references all checked out.
Who brought this to -- I'm sorry, go ahead.
The gentleman, the union wrote a letter and dropped that off today, so that came up today, and the gentleman raised the issue again this evening during town hall.
I was going to say, interestingly enough, we do have kind of a third party reviewing our bid and the proposals on this one.
Correct. And so when I didn't.
Engineering Solutions Team? And they found no issues with any of this as well? I mean, obviously, staff did not either, but.
That is correct. Engineering Solutions is a engineering firm that we contracted out to assist us with writing the specs. They also did check out this company, and they have positive recommendation also.
So as a part of their work for us, they would be vetting them somewhat to look for problems like this, is that correct?
That is correct. They're checking out references, you know, if there was an issue with payments, if there was issue with performance of their duties that they were performing with these other communities.
And so barring anything glaringly wrong or anything obvious to us, because they were the low bidder, we essentially must award them the contract, is that correct?
You have to award it to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. The bid was responsive, and the issue, only issues are they responsible, and something from a different company, even though maybe blood-related, does not make them not responsible. So in my view, where there's a $15,000 difference, and as I stated, I think their concern is union wages versus non, and that's maybe why they think there's a $15,000 difference. But we will insist and check that they paid prevailing wages.
So once again, to my simplest mind, staff has checked this out, the independent engineering firm has checked this out, they've found no reason that we can necessarily deny the bid.
Not based on performance, and this action was unknown to us at that time, wouldn't come up.
Looking at page 11 in article or paragraph 13 or whatever is under prevailing wages, there's a half a page in here essentially insisting that they pay prevailing wages. Is that correct?
Right. So I don't see a basis based on their concerns and what they've raised that you could say that they're not a responsible bidder. It's something we'll keep an eye on.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Items three and four were taken care of under the consent agenda, and I know that I speak for Director Kestner and all our little snowplowers, and we wish all the other departments a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Trustee Aaronz.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business? At this point, I believe staff has a new business brief, 45-minute presentation on our new toy for our citizens.
This is our special, oh, she's going to do a holiday treat for the board. We thought we would add on and give you a.
You guys going to break out and do a Flash song or something?
That's later.
All right.
Put the screen on for us. And there we are. Well, you got a sneak peek of this program in October, but we wanted to give a very brief overview of the system now that we promoted it out to the community in the Bart letter this month. Bartlett Go! Request has a goal of increasing communication with our residents, increasing the accuracy of that communication, and increasing the accountability of our response to the resident's request. The system also helps us improve our customer service by tracking all information about a service request and all the actions taken to resolve an issue by one department or multiple departments. On the website, residents can go to frequently asked questions and search by keyword, a topic, or as I like to call it, the top 10 list. The top 10 list is the most frequently asked questions generated by numbers of hits, so it could vary seasonally. In the winter, we may have lots of questions about snow removal or weather, and in the summer, we'll have a completely different list. Residents select their topic. They'll see information about related ordinances and what a typical village response would be to their question. And in this example, the resident chose tall weeds and grass, given information about what is a violation. And if the resident wanted to make a service request, they would fill out the information on what type of problem there is, where it's located. They can add a photo or additional comments and contact information. When the location is entered, a Google map will appear, and if they provide an email address, they will receive an email back from the village and can track the status of their request. A tracking number for the request is given, a unique number for each request, and an email is sent to the resident notifying them that we received their request and then also what actions being taken. Residents may also submit a request using a smartphone following the same basic procedure. The mobile app's available for iPhone at the Apple App Store and the Android and the Google Play Store. This is what the mobile app looks like. Two buttons, one is to submit a request, the other is to track a status of a request. In this particular instance, the issue is graffiti, and they select the type of problem. They can attach a photo of said graffiti. They can add additional comments to describe the issue. They can also add contact information. The location of the issue will automatically be populated using the GIS, the GPS system in the phone. However, if, let's say it's a pothole, and the resident pulled over into a parking lot, they can drag a pin to, you know, where the problem is. And that gets submitted along with the information that they provide, so really giving us really good information on the request. They click submit when they're done, and they get a pop-up that has their tracking number, so they can follow it if they choose. And here is the tracking screen, that if they select to track their issues, they can be linked to all those different issues. This person apparently had lots of problems.
Lots of time on her hands.
When a request is completed, an email is automatically generated to the resident explaining what actions were taken to complete the request, and they also receive a link to a satisfaction survey that gives them the opportunity to evaluate the service they received. Several different kinds of reports are generated. They're available to staff supervisors. They can sort them by time or date, open request or closed, by location, by employee. Also, the satisfaction surveys are summarized. The system also sends a reminder to the staff when a completion date is nearing. That's my particular favorite feature because I'm usually the person who's doing that, so I'm excited that we have a system that does that. We're looking forward to really implementing it full force, starting in December, and then you'll be seeing some of these reports in your monthly reports that you get from each department. And that's all I have.
So can we ask you some questions?
Absolutely.
No.
Is it live? Obviously live. No, I just.
Yes, it is live.
I just load as the app. It's like two seconds.
What's it under? Go Bartlett?
Have we got?
Go Request.
Do we have actually data coming in already?
Mm-hmm, we have.
How did the residents find out about it, Paul?
There's a whole page in the Bart letter about it. We also sent out email blasts, and we're doing a, well, I think the press release went out this week.
Good.
Well, how many people do we have out of the village that are actually requesting to be on the emails?
It depends on the topic, because we have lots of different topics that residents can self-select. It ranges from, I think our busiest list is 174, and then I think maybe our smallest is maybe around 105. So it varies by topic. We do require the residents sign up for that email blast. We don't want to capture emails that come into the village because we think that may be a little bit too intrusive, and people wouldn't want their information captured when they're just emailing about, you know, tall weeds and grass, and maybe won't want to be generating, thus to push those out to them independently.
So just as you said, the only way people get this is if they ask for it. So if we have, right now, you're saying we have 100 and some odd residents out of 43,000 approximately that are using this in some degree, is that right?
Yes, well, that are using the email blast system.
Right. Well.
Well, but it's topic-related.
Well, I know, but still.
Way more than a hundred. Each topic has a hundred.
Oh, yes, yes. Each topic, yes.
They're not all, they're not all cross.
Right. There's like, I think, five or six different topics that people.
Which I think is excellent, because that way you're not getting all the stuff from the village that you might not want.
We have special events and police and village board, they get the packet. It varies.
So when they do a complaint, they have to, obviously, they'll have a phone number or some kind of contact. What other information do they have to submit? I mean, do they always have to do a full name?
They have to submit phone number.
Okay.
But other information, they do not have to submit.
Okay. So it can't be anonymous neighbors turning.
Right.
Paul, I had two kind of logistical questions for you. One is, what if the person doesn't enable the GPS in their phone? Are they still able to use the app in its entirety, or?
Um, no.
It wouldn't work at all at that point?
No.
Okay. And then the second question is, I assume, if somebody sends you a picture, and I'll use the graffiti example, a picture of graffiti in the Park District property, do we then forward the request on the Park District and tell the people, hey, that's a Park District issue, but we forwarded it on? Or how does that work?
Well, if there's, if there is an issue that comes up that, that isn't under our purview, we can write an independent message to the, to the resident.
Okay.
Lots of times, if there's, you know, multiple issues that are maybe in the comment section, well, you know, we don't have a canned answer for that, so we will send an individual email letting them know that, yes, we, we got the, got your request, it is Park District property, we will forward that on to the Park District for response.
I just wanted to make sure that was happening too.
And then that's entered into the logs so that we know what happened to that request.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Looks good.
Well, I think it's a great product. I think we, I'm just, I just want to see the residents be able to utilize it. That's.
Oh, you know, having it on the, in, in the Bart Letter, very similar to this, and we're also putting it out on all our venues. Twitter, we're putting it out on the cable station, so we're trying to, to catch as many people as we can.
And if we have an unsatisfied person, do we call them personally, or how's that going to work?
Oh, on the, like, on the survey?
Yeah.
Depends. But, you know, we have their phone number, so yeah, lots of times we do call.
That's great.
How many, how many requests have we received so far?
Um, oh, gosh.
Salt Park, I guess.
I would say probably, Public Works put all of theirs in, so they have like two hundred, I think, since October. I think we probably have two fifty, maybe, just on what we've been monitoring. Police Department, fewer, but they have different forms.
That's great.
You are excited about it.
It's real responsive to any problems that our residents have and can be. Of course, it's a smartphone situation, so you can't expect, you know, every resident to buy in, but it's good.
Thanks.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Can we do the budget that quickly?
Pardon me?
No.
Jeff, is there any other new business for the good?
Just well, well wishes again, echoing your comments. Well wishes for great holiday, a great Christmas, prosperous New Year, everyone be safe, enjoy yourselves, and thank you to staff and all of our village employees for their hard work throughout the year. Sometimes I think, I hope I'm not taking your comments.
Oh, no.
But I think sometimes we sit up here and we, we forget really what makes the engine turn, and that's, that's the people who work for this village and the residents too. So thank you to all of those people for making our job a lot easier.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yes. So they're not going to do the cutout for Red Oak? That, that was negated, right?
The signal?
No, not the signal. I mean, the, the lane, so people can pull over and slow down, as opposed to slamming on their brakes, getting hit from behind.
No, but there is still a public hearing on alternative nine U that we've all seen, which involves those U-turns. There's still an opportunity to come.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not worried about the U-turns. That's a different bag.
They're not, they're not going to do a de-sell lane into Red Oak.
Okay. My, my question would be is, what if we paid for that, would they be more apt? Because I know Illinois Department of Transportation is hurting for money, the state of Illinois is. But if we did that, if Bartlett did that, can we look, how much would that be? Just curious.
I think there's some problems with that idea. I mean, one, I don't think we necessarily have the money either, and secondly, that's IDOT's property. It's kind of their purview. I don't know if I'm overstating that, or if that's.
That's the reason why they're bulking. I mean, I've turned there a couple times, like, holy cow, that car was close. It's only a matter of time.
I don't disagree with you that it's an issue, and probably a safety issue too, but I don't, if IDOT's saying that it can't, or they won't do it.
Well, won't and can are two different. It's just they don't want to.
I just don't think that it's.
Is this going to be an agenda item coming up once again on the committee when we get all this information in?
We'd be happy to if you'd like to take.
Well, I think it's going to be an ongoing discussion. So when we get more facts, I think it would be a great idea to throw it on the agenda again, so we'll get more folks in here. It's a, there's too many moving parts in this whole fifty-nine, twenty.
And we'd be happy to have our traffic engineer, consulting traffic engineer, come in at that point in time as well.
And I suppose we could actually invite somebody from IDOT. Well, I think the letter from Kimberly Murphy to George Cozy stated that now they found that they can't put a landing in the middle of Route 59 because it's against state law. You can't have a landing area in the middle of a US state route. So it's changing the demographics of.
Like I said, there's way too many moving parts, and as far as I understand, nothing's going to happen for some time because nobody's, yeah. So I think we need to keep, continue bringing up these concerns, because you're exactly right, Greg, and I think we need to make sure that we're listening and not just say, okay, IDOT's tying our hands. We have to actually try to get something done.
Yeah, I can't believe we don't have any say.
Yeah.
Well, I think that that's right. We'll look at it. IDOT did redo their plans and look at it once already, based on the input that we gave and the neighbors gave throughout the spring and the summer. But you're right, it isn't going to happen for a while, so we certainly have the opportunity to keep giving input.
Yeah. And I guess from, from the amount that I, the amount of time that I've spent on this, and most people have, I'm frustrated that they don't have definitive things that they can do. It shouldn't, maybe it's just my, being naive, but it shouldn't be a moving target once they say, this is the final final. You know, it's hard to explain that to residents when we say, oh, this is really going to work well now, and now it's not. So obviously, we'll frustr, stress those frustrations to IDOT, and I don't think it's out of the question not to have them at a meeting at some point and just explain to us, to our residents, what's going on.
We certainly thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there any other?
Have a warm and safe New Years and Christmas.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any new business? Move on to questions and answers? Nothing?